We have a lot of things to go over. Hey, Joe, can people hear me on the Zoom? Can you hear me from here? Okay, good, then I can just sit here. So, this is an odd situation in terms of meetings because we have this group of freeholders, which are all members because you've been elected. And in a moment, you're going to be sworn into office and you'll become a duly-elected group of representatives for the city. But there's no one here to call it to order, there's no process, there's no way for you to meet. And so, it is a... This is a process that we're going to go through and to some extent, we're going to go through it together. And it's... We don't have any examples in the last 40 years of any other city being able to do this or even trying to do this. And so, that leaves us with literally no model to use to figure out how do we go forth. The last time that I was involved in something like this, I started a group and it had about 20 people in it. We gave them the task... We got the 20 people who wanted to be involved in it, we gave them the task of getting organized and figuring out how they could operate as a group. It took them two and a half months, almost three months, to figure out how this is working as a group, which was fine because they didn't have any deadlines that they had to work to and so they could take plenty of time talking to all the different levels of my organization. Here, we have some very unusual sets of schedule requirements because the provisions for forming a charter city are given to us in our state constitution and in Article 9, is that correct? Article 16. So, those three statutes or those three rules are not coordinated with each other very well at all. Article 16 should have... It changes really Article 9 deadlines, but it's never changed them officially. So, we have to work under deadlines that are not... This is an unusual process. And it gives you, because of the deadlines in there, you only have one drop-dead deadline. And that is that you must have the charter completed where it has been voted on by the group and accepted. It's been reviewed by the attorneys. It needs to be done, and this is an approximate date, but you can... For now, you can work with the date, January the 16th. If it isn't done by January the 16th, then we can't meet deadlines for getting it published and deadlines for getting it to the county so that it can be included for the March ballot. So, that deadline is one that we really can't modify. It is something you have to live with. So, that's only, I don't know, eight weeks or so from now. So, if you spend eight weeks trying to figure out how to organize and how to do this and how to work on it, and you're working on a charter that's going to be 30 pages plus or minus, I think everybody here can understand that you can't get it done. This isn't going to happen. So, what the city has done is while you've been out getting elected, the city and its staff has worked on putting together a model charter that is based on all of the other 19 charters that are in the state. That model charter is in the flash drive that's been provided for you. Also on the flash drive is a copy of all the other 19 charters so you can see what those charters all say. If you were to look at every 19, you'll have them there for your purposes. There's also some information, there's a spreadsheet, I think, that compares various provisions of various charters so you can get some idea of how others charters deal with it without necessarily having to read any of the charters. So, the staff has put together a lot of information for you. They've put together some possibilities for scheduling and how you might organize yourselves in the future. The first thing I want you to understand is that you are a duly-elected group that gets its authority from the residents of the city of Litchfield Park. Your authority does not come from the city council, although you are part of the city and so you're governed by rules that the city has to live by. You are a separate entity from the city council and you're a totally separate entity from staff, whether it's the city manager, the city clerk, the city attorney, the staff... You don't report to the staff. The staff of the city is here to help you in your task. They're going to give you advice. They've spent a lot of time while you've been out during the election period, they've spent a lot of time trying to figure out how all this can work together. So, they have a lot of informed advice for you, but it is only advice. This is your responsibility, given to you by the citizens. You're the ones who are going to review the charters, the charter provisions, you're going to decide what should be in our charter, you're going to vote as a group and work as a group to get it done. And the rest of us, whether it's the city council or the staff, we're here simply to help you and give you advice. But it is your decision, not ours. Second thing, then, to think about in terms of this acting as a group, once we give you the open office, you're going to be a group of freeholders that represents the city in this effort. No one in this group, whether you are someone who never comes to a meeting or if you're the chairman of this group, you're the absolute leader of the group, no one of you individually speaks for this group. That is something that is very important for anyone who's elected to any kind of a group like this to take to heart. You do not speak for the group of freeholders. The only way the group of freeholders speaks is by a vote of the freeholders, something that is passed by a simple majority. A vote of the freeholders is the only way you speak on a topic. So, if somebody from the press comes in and wants your advice on what we're going to have as a charter and the freeholders haven't adopted a charter, you cannot speak for the freeholders. And I'm going to tell you that one of the most powerful things you have in your vocabulary is the words "no comment." Because as soon as you open your mouth, you're expecting a person who you're talking to to interpret what you're saying and to be able to write what they interpret you said on a piece of paper for publication. The chances of it being accurate is about zero. So, anything beyond "no comment" is not very well taken. The best thing for you to do, my advice to you, is you need to work as a group, respect each other as a group, don't speak on behalf of the group. Get your job done with the charter and that's your speech, that's what you're doing. And once it's done, then you can present that to people who want to know, what are we working on? What is it we're saying the city should be? What's the charter going to say? You can give them what it says. And it won't be misunderstood, it won't be misinterpreted. Just a piece of advice. So, just a little bit of history and then I can hopefully stop talking. This effort began about 11 months ago. It traces its roots back all the way to the time when the original incorporation of the city in terms of discussions of having a charter. But the discussions became in much more earnest about 11 months ago. It was mentioned to a group of commissioners at a thank-you party for people who have given their time up volunteering their time for the city. And I talked to them a little bit about forming this charter. And I asked Paul Trineski to help me in getting people to agree to run as freeholder. And I didn't do that just on the spur of the moment, but it was for a reason. Paul's family has been in Litchfield for almost forever. I don't know if Dr. Trineski, his dad, treated Paul Litchfield or not, but he might have. So, Joe wants to help in this group because he is from the middle. He's not an old person like me and he's not a young person like my grandkids. He's in the middle and it is the group that we need to get more involved in our city. I think he is respected by the citizens, by the people who know him, and I thought he would be able to attract the diversity of people who would be willing to work on this. And I think he has. He has. A lot of the people who are sitting here are sitting here because he talked to you and he asked you to come. So, I appreciate the fact that he did that and that you're here. And I also appreciate the ones who are here not because he asked, but because they found out about the effort or they were asked by someone else to run. For various reasons, they chose to run. So, what we have is a very, very good diverse group that represents all facets of our community. And that is exactly what was desired. So, why do we do this? The state constitution is where the authority is given for cities. The state constitution says that the state can have municipalities, citizens can get together and decide to form municipalities to govern on their local issues. The state constitution says that these cities can either follow state statutes for the way that they operate. Those are called general law cities, which is what Litchfield Park is. So, state statutes govern the things that generally that Litchfield Park as a city can do and what we can... The actions we can take, the rules that we can set forth. Or you can be a charter city. A charter city actually derives its authority from the state constitution and then through other enabling statutes. The charter city gives the city, a city, the right to set its own rules separate from the legislature in many cases where things that are of local control, local nature. So, things that impact just the residents of this city, we can write rules for them. And they can be different things. So, how does our council operate? Obviously, the way our council operates doesn't impact how the council of Goodyear operates. Or how does the city manager here operate? City manager doesn't impact the way that city manager in some other part of the state operates. So, there are things about the city that are of local nature that are covered in the charter. There are other things that may also be covered in the charter that... So, anyway, so then why did I think that we should have a charter? The reason is that for general law cities, the state legislature can change the rules that we live under anytime they want to change, which is always a concern, but it's never been a driving concern because the legislature has typically been reasonable and we can deal with the legislature through various ways we communicate with them. Unfortunately, the legislature has become not so reasonable. Much of the political life in our entire country has become not so reasonable. So, there are various efforts every year to have impact on the way cities do things. I'm involved as an executive committee for the League of Cities and Towns and I can tell you in a bad year, we have to deal with five issues. Those are five things that are serious enough impacts on cities that we have to deal with those five things. And we spend a lot of money lobbying and talking to legislators and getting those things either defeated or changed in a way that it doesn't negatively affect us. Lately, the last couple of years, we have probably been dealing with 30 issues every year that seriously have a serious impact on the way cities do business. And they involve all kinds of things. We had one directly in Litchfield Park where they wrote a law that only applied to Litchfield Park and the entire state that prevented us from having Calback Road be designated as a no-truck zone. The only city it affected, the only area in the state it affected was Litchfield Park. The legislature took the time to do that, we thank them for that. They also got into things like zoning by right where you can go in and put things in and not meet the zoning requirements. So, if you decide you want to develop this piece of land, you can put it in an area potentially and the city has no way to deal with it. It's a use that doesn't fit. The whole idea of cities, the reason we're here is to protect our lifestyles for this city and to make judgments on what kind of land... What should this land be used for? How can we do this in a way that we can have the various things that we want in the city, but we don't do it in a way that negatively impacts our residences? It doesn't impact our residents or the residential areas. There's movements at the state legislature to take away that right, take away the ability to do zoning. There's other examples that are very, very difficult for cities to really be able to fulfill their mission. And our mission has been very clear since we were incorporated and that is to protect the small-town environment and lifestyle of Litchfield Park. So, the charter will help us as we try to resist this. The extent things are local in nature, we can cover topics in the charter that will give us better arguments to resist changes at the legislature. So, the charter, I think, is very important. It's going to be important in the future to the extent that we have legislative efforts to try to write rules that impact the way that we deal with local issues in Litchfield Park. So, that's the why. So, I told you that the reason this is such a rushed situation, we've got to get the charter to the county for publication in the election. The election has to be in March, we don't have the option to go to June. So, if we're going to get this charter with this group of freeholders, it has to be ready to be voted on by the people in March, which makes the deadline of getting it to the county at the end of January. But we also have to get it published. And because of publication requirements, the real deadline is January the 16th. So, again, it's about eight weeks. The city staff has put together and is provided for you in these thumb drives, has put together a model charter and has put together a process, which they're going to explain to you later, that I think will maximize your time so that you can do a really thorough job on the entire charter, but you can divide up and do it in a way that will multiply your efforts, which I think is essential if we're going to get a good job done in the next eight weeks. So, we'll present that to you in a bit. We're going to go now into this agenda, but before we do that, I want to explain the nature of this agenda and why it's so long. So, the other thing that we're going to do today is we're going to have a condensed version of open meeting law training. We have requirements under state statutes that whenever we have a group like you meet, they have to meet the provisions of the open meeting law. And one of those provisions is that you have to publish and put out to the public an agenda and that agenda is what limits what you can talk about at the meeting. So, if it's not on the agenda in some manner, you can't speak about it. So, this agenda was put together as something that could be published that had all kinds of things on it so you can talk about all the things. So, anything that's on this agenda can properly be discussed at this meeting. It's not on the agenda you can't talk about. But the agenda, literally, once we get into it, the agenda is yours. You can talk about these things or you can decide you don't want to talk about these things. I'm going to tell you, you can't get through every item on this agenda. This agenda can never be fulfilled, but it gives you the ability to cover a number of things that are very important in this first meeting. After this, the agenda will be put together by the leadership of your group. Staff is here to help you, so if you want to communicate with staff and let them know what it is you're going to need about, either in a subcommittee or in a court mate, the staff will prepare agendas and will get them published for you. If you want to do it yourselves, you can do it yourselves. It would suggest that you won't do it that way. But they're your agendas, you'll be the one who will set your own agenda. I think that covers all the stuff that we need to cover today except for another unsolicited piece of advice. On the agenda, we have to absolutely, we're going to do number 3A, which is to give you your open office. We're going to absolutely do number D, which is a condensed version of the open meeting law and public records. We need you to understand that for example, public records, Suzanne has her computer here. To the extent that you do business for the freeholders on that computer, you have the potential for those files to be available for public record requests. So, you have to be very careful where you do your work. We are going to offer to anyone who wants it, we will buy you an inexpensive laptop machine, laptop computer or tablet that you can do all of the work on, you can do your editing on, you can save your documents on it, you can put stuff on it. And then you don't have to worry about something being on a private machine that you don't want to have someone around and saying, "I want your files." It's up to you. If you want it, you have to let us know and we'll get the full range to get those for you. So, we're going to go through open meeting law and public records. Then, the next thing that is absolutely critical is you have to... You need to elect some way to lead your group. And we call it a chairperson. I don't care what you call it, but somebody has to be elected by your group to be the chair, to do the functions of the chair, because we need someone we can communicate with. Right now, we have to communicate with all 14. All 14 can only deal with something if you get together as a group. We need a chairperson. Chairperson normally will set the agendas, will be responsible to keep things on task, do various things that a chair has to do, but we need to get that done. So, I would recommend that you at least get through that agenda item. And then the next one that you're going to need to talk about, whether you can get it done today or if this is something that you think the chair needs to work on in the future to get it done, is we've got to figure out the way you're going to approach this effort and a schedule, I mean, exact dates for when you want to meet. This room is not particularly convenient for 14 people. We can still meet here and we'll make this room available whenever you need to use it, but it's not the most convenient place for this size of group. We are happy to rent rooms at the Wiggwam or in the school or places around here if we know exactly when you're going to use them. But we can't do that until we have a schedule. So, I think you need to at least talk about the schedule and figure out how you're going to approach setting that schedule in this meeting today. So, you have an hour and a half to get all that done, unless you want to run over, which is fine too. So, Mr. City Manager and Joe, did I cover what needs to be covered before they get started on their open office? Do you think I covered everything that we... ...that we talked about? Yep? All right.
Can I just ask a question about the last thing you said?
Absolutely.
This meeting's an open public meeting.
Correct.
So, you had to post it.
Correct.
And the requirement for that is what, 24 hours in advance?
Correct.
And then all of the... If they break up in the subcommittees, all of those will also be public meetings.
Yes.
So, if we said, "We'll just meet at Marty's house," he has to invite the public to come in.
Public guest will come in.
Okay. He won't invite any of us.
All right. Any other questions before we get into the open office? All right. If not... Kirk, are you going to administer the oaths?
Yes, sir.
All right. You guys all stand up.
Please stand right here. And repeat after me. I state your name. I am the mayor of Litchfield. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
In the United States.
I solemnly swear.
I am the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of laws of the states for our honor.
Thanks.
I will bear allegiance to the same.
I will believe in the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
...be charged to the duties of the Office of Board of Freeholders.
The Office of Freeholders.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God. Okay, so, the next item on my agenda is like the appointment of a chairperson. I'm going to suggest to you that it's more important to do this open meeting law and public records informational presentation by the city attorney because this is... You, now that you're sworn in, you are bound by this and you have to deal with public access to your records. So, you need to understand this, so I would suggest we do this and do that next.
Could I get, before we start, everyone to sign their oath and turn it in to me, please? Do you find... Thank you. So, is there any conflict with you thinking like city computers?
And again, I think if you want that separate computer, just because of the potential concern for public record issues, it's available. I don't foresee there being any real issues with public records requests and requesting copies of drafts or communications or notes and stuff. It's just something that's important to remember that as you do your work, as you do your duty as a freeholder, that is considered a public record. In Arizona, just about everything is a public record unless it's specifically excluded or made confidential by statute.
And just to clarify, does that also extend to email as well? So, if people are using emails to communicate about this, then that would be subject to public records?
Yes, and we'll cover some of the email stuff and things. If, my suggestion would be if you want to, there's a couple of different ways you can do that. You can have a city email address established to be able to do that. Or another way is if you establish a sole dedicated Gmail account or something that you only use for your freeholder work. It just makes it easier so if somebody says, "I want to submit a public record request for all emails from this individual to that individual," or whatever, you're not having to go through and your own personal stuff to pull out and... So, it makes it a lot cleaner, a lot easier when you have those things segregated. You can also put a folder, start a folder and save everything in that folder.
May I ask a question? Would it not make sense that we all have a free... Like paul@freeholder.litchfield.com? Would that not make sense? And we'd all know...
Yes.
Is that a lot of work, Harry? I don't know.
To create an email?
Yeah, for each one of us, just... And then we only communicate. I agree.
Whatever you guys want, we will make happen.
I think that sounds easy.
I agree with that. The mayor says what he wants, we make it happen. You guys are... For the best of our ability.
When I say jump, they go, "What?"
Quick question on meeting outside as group individuals. Is there a maximum number? Cannot talk about anything?
Yeah, and we'll get into that a little bit with this. But yeah, open meeting law with this group of 14, so you establish a quorum at eight. I would encourage you not to have communications with, really outside the public meetings just because the concern becomes, as we'll explain in a little bit, what we call a serial communication where I told one person, you told another person, and it went down and more than eight people were involved in the discussion, that wasn't part of a public meeting. You don't actually have to be together to be in a meeting. Literally, it can just be a series of conversations around the table and all totally separate, but it becomes a meeting.
Mayor, I thought you had a good suggestion that we should get a chairman in place. Can you tell me who's on the phone?
Yeah. I think we're trying to do the open meeting law first.
Oh, you want to do that first?
And then the next thing I would suggest you is to let you guys elect a chairman.
Who's on the phone? Who do we have?
Who's on Zoom?
No. Yeah, but there's a male voice here.
Chuck Emmert?
Chuck Emmert?
Hi, Chuck Emmert. We're at the airport and on the phone.
Okay. And I think it's good to have the... Get the training out of the way and that way, you may or may not want to be a chairman after the training. So, we'll go ahead and first...
Do the training.
So, just a little bit, we're going to talk a little bit and try to truncate this as much as possible because you guys have a very limited focus and purpose as Board of Freeholders. You're not involved with approving contracts and development agreements and all the other stuff that a city council would be dealing with. But you are governed by the open meeting law, governed by public records and to a certain extent, conflict of interest. We're going to kind of not focus a lot on conflict of interest because there really isn't much I can foresee of being a conflict in the way of drafting a charter. A conflict of interest arises when you have a pecuniary interest in something that comes before the board, like if a lease agreement or a contract or something were to come before the council. I don't anticipate there's going to be those types of issues with the Board of Freeholders with it being a very specific, limited focus and the amount of time that you have to get things done. So, what is an open meeting law? So what is an open, open meeting law? An act mandating open deliberations, proceedings to the public, and prohibiting public bodies from making decisions in secret. And they're governed by, uh, a number of ARS statutes. The core concepts there are official deliberations and proceedings are conducted openly. Uh, maximize public access and participation, and any uncertainty is resolved in favor of open. So these are just little, kind of, uh, ten points of, you know, what, what is an open meeting? What public's business has to be done in public. There has to be proper notification. There are certain limited, uh, instances where we can do, uh, private meetings, which are called executive sessions. And that allows for the opportunity to obtain legal advice. With this group, it would probably be specifically limited to legal advice. There's other, other statutes that allow, for example, the, the city council to meet to discuss personnel, property purchases and different things like that. But with regard to the, the board, it would be, if there's any questions or concerns with regards to legal advice as to the process or specific legal questions as to maybe a provision that you're contemplating and you want to know, uh, some, some potential details, pitfalls and stuff like that. A good, a good example of that, and it's going to be, it'll be part of your process, at the very end, before you make your final vote on the final charter, you want to have it reviewed by the attorneys. So you send them your final charter, they may mark stuff up and say, well, we need to change this language or do this or do that for various reasons. So when the, if that happens, then it would be natural to have an executive session where Joe or somebody else from the attorney's office will come in and give you legal advice on why these changes are being suggested. So you can do that in private. But then when you want to adopt the charter, you have to go back to open meeting. And again, there's a 24-hour notice requirement for all meetings. You have to publish those meetings 24 hours ahead of time. So the open meeting law applies, you are a public body and you are a meeting. So it wouldn't apply if, for example, you know, three or four of you got together, uh, for lunch or something. I would still encourage you not to discuss the Board of Freeholders stuff. But even if you all got together to go to a, an activity or something, as long as it's not a, a Board of Freeholders discussion, uh, it's a community thing, you don't have to worry about that. But it is when you're a public, public body and you are conducting a meeting. We're going to kind of skip through here, you guys are a public body. You're, you're elected, uh, you're governed by these rules and regulations. The next is, the big no-no is just the, the open meeting law specifically states that a member of a public body may not knowingly instruct staff to communicate in violation of the law. So it's just, you know, the, in order to, to skirt the rules, you can't ask a, a staff member something to communicate to somebody else and get back to you. You've got to act as a, as a body. So, so next, um, what is a meeting? This has changed a little bit over the years. Meeting used to be, it was in-person, it was, you're physically present. But as you can see today, we've got members who are here via Zoom. A meeting can be conducted in a number of ways. However you, as a board, choose to do that, you can have all your meetings in person, you can have a hybrid schedule, however you guys want to do that, however you want to accomplish that. We just need to be able to know, to be able to publish, to make sure that those are open to the public. If you're going to be doing a Zoom meeting, we publish and, and have the, the Zoom link available for anybody who wants to attend that. The next is the quorum. We've talked a little bit about that, majority of the public body, uh, unless otherwise noted by statute. You are a first fourteen-person public body, so a quorum is eight. That also means that if you have a meeting scheduled, you've got to have eight. You, you need to be able to, uh, meet those, those requirements to be able to hold that meeting. We can talk a little bit about that. If you do choose to, for example, uh, form subcommittees to try to break up the work and, and do that, we can address those issues if you guys choose to, to form those subcommittees and stuff. But we would still have those, subcommittee meetings would be open to the public. They would be noticed and say if you have a, six people on a subcommittee, you would have to have the majority of, of that subcommittee present to be able to conduct that meeting for that subcommittee.
So would that be four?
Just depends, I, you know, again, probably up to you as to how you want to set up. If you want to set up subcommittees, you don't have to. These are just suggestions and opportunities for you guys to have those discussions because again, this agenda is, is unique because you weren't a formed body when we had to put the agenda together. So it's, okay, let's, you know, kitchen sink approach, throw as much on there as we can so that you have the opportunity. You don't, you can choose to do it, forego it, do whatever, uh, is, is the board's pleasure. So open meeting law pitfalls, we've talked, talked a little bit. For example, the, the serial meeting, which is a discussion of, of, among members with less than a quorum present. Then later, that same discussion with other members and eventually enough additional members to constitute a quorum, which would create the possibility of a serial meeting, which could be a, a open meeting law violation. Next, uh, always remember, a series of gatherings of less than a quorum may constitute a meeting if board business is discussed and, and proposed. So it's just something to always have in your mind and in your thought process with regard to discussions with other board members. So next, it seems simple, but technology can complicate things. An accidental reply all to an email can create an open meeting. I, I have personally responded to and prepared defenses to the Attorney General's office for, not in, not in the city, but other municipalities. Council members who accidentally replied all and expressed an opinion with regard to a matter that was pending before the council. And it got referred over and there's usually a lot of hand flapping and additional training that the city attorney then has to do to, to remind, uh, board members of, of their, their obligation. So, open meeting law, again, pitfalls with regard to email. Will it propose a legal action? Does it contain facts or opinions that maybe come before the public body? Is it sent to seven or more members? Just always, you know, a lot of times if, if something's coming from staff to the entire board, a lot of times we try to put it that, you know, how, just a reminder, please don't reply all. Because we have just, staff, we can send out information there. And then that doesn't violate the open meeting law because it's just providing out information. It's if there's a response that deals with the, with the substance or subject to something that's coming before the board, uh, that can cause that violation. So just remember, one way communications can violate the open meeting law. It does not have to be an actual back and forth discussion with regard to something. Just one, one email with, with an opinion on a substantive matter that's before the board can be an open meeting law violation. The other pitfalls are going to be social media. Social media's everywhere. I would encourage that you don't engage and do discussions or anything on social media with regard to the board during this short time period. It just makes it so much easier because not only does it run into open meeting law issues, it also creates public record issues and headaches because if you post something on a Facebook page that you're posting in, in your capacity as a board member, it could be considered a public record and then the city has to maintain it and, and keep it for a period of time and stuff. So again, encouragement, advice, uh, but you guys are the elected officials with regard to this matter, so just be cognizant of those issues and concerns. Next, you can express your opinion or discuss issues with the public personally, uh, through the media, through technology. As the mayor recommended, uh, the, the recommended approach is no comment. We don't have a, a time here, so it's not like, you know, there, there shouldn't be a significant number of issues with, just saying, you know, no comments, we, we need to get through this process. You only have until, uh, mid-January to, to come up with, with a proposed charter. Especially if there's no co-, uh, you know, collaborative or, or concrete plan that has been proposed by the board. If you're answering a question of something that the board's discussed and voted on, then yeah, that's a, that's a board action. But again, remember, you are a board, you act together, um, just like one person here cannot bind the board. The board can only be bound by its, uh, majority action of its members. Just again, be mindful of, of social media, who you friend, who you talk to, posts and comments, with regard to the process. Also be, to be mindful of, of attending other meetings. If, if the majority of, of board members attend a council meeting or any other meeting or something like that, uh, if there's something that's going to happen that, is a, you know, the, the board wants to come and, and have a discussion with the council or joint work session or anything, just has to be, has to be noticed as a, as a potential quorum. It's not a big issue.
So you're saying at a city council meeting, you don't want fourteen freeholders sitting in there listening?
You can sit, you can sit and listen, but if you're going to bring up anything that revolves around the charter, we just need to notice it. It's just, uh, again, a lot of this stuff's really not going to be too much of a concern with the, with the very limited scope and very short timeframe that we have. Just want to make sure that you guys have a resource handy to know what, what the issues are, what some of the pitfalls are that, that we've dealt with, uh, throughout the years, cases that we've had to respond to and things like that. Again, just options, recommendations, just be mindful of what does constitute a quorum, what isn't, uh, constitutes a meeting, open meeting law concerns. Next, just basic principles for calling a, a meeting. For the meeting to be a legally held meeting, it has to be like this where we have to publish and post an agenda. It has to be done 24 hours in advance. We put out, except in the case of an actual emergency. I can't think of any type of an emergency that the Board of Freeholders may have that would constitute a legal emergency that would require, that would allow for less than 24 hours notice. So just know that your meetings need to be published 24 hours ahead of time. We would like to try to get a schedule as detailed as possible so we can have that published and have that available so everybody knows what's going on as much as possible ahead of time. But again, just the, the, the basic statutory rule is 24 hours. Don't worry about if the website's down or, or publishing and stuff. If, if the board chooses, the board can have the city clerk handle the publication of the agendas and things like that, or if the board wants to select someone else to do that or have a member of the board act as a secretary and do that and take on that responsibility. Again, the city staff is available to assist in that process. We just need direction from the board as to how you want city staff to, to handle those things for you. This is an aside, as you meet, whether you're meeting as a board or if you, if you end up choosing to use subcommittees, there has to be minutes taken. So we're happy to, to provide staff if it's during normal business hours where we have somebody available, we'll, we'll help you with that because there needs to be minutes. If not, then someone in the group is going to have to take minutes and get them, or you have to maintain minutes. And we typically record the meetings so that if there's a question, we have the recordings available as well. There's also statutory requirements for when those recordings have to be published and available online and then when the minutes have to be approved and published by the board. And again, your staff and we are available to assist with, with all of that to make sure that the process goes smoothly. We want you guys to focus on the charter and not have to worry about the, you know, all the little intricacies of, of the, the meetings and schedules.
What's the requirement for the minutes to be posted? What's the turn, the timeframe that they have to be turned around?
For this board, I'll have to double check, but it typically, the minutes are approved at a, at a next regularly scheduled meeting. Usually the, the, the video or recording is online within three days. So, but the actual minutes, and, and the minutes, the minutes don't have to be verbatim, word for word of what, everything that was discussed. It just is a general outline of what was discussed. The main things that the minutes have to have in there is if you take any action, it has to specify what action was taken, who made the motion, who seconded the motion and what the, what the outcome of that action was.
Are you saying that if a group decided to do subcommittees, that each one has to be recorded and, and available by Zoom and all that stuff?
Yeah, by Zoom, but you have to record it. Yep. You're recording with your phone. It doesn't have to be available by Zoom, we're saying that you can, you can do Zoom meetings.
No, I'm just trying to find out what's the requirement?
The require, the basic requirement is just 24 hours notice and you have to have a quorum. If you're going to establish subcommittees, we would need to know what, essentially the quorum requirements would be the, based off of the number of members that are a part of that.
But you have to have minutes and does it have to be recorded?
Yes. Minutes and recording and posting. And again, that gets into the whole open, open meeting, public deliberations that, you know, there's no perception that things are being done behind closed doors and different things like that. And again, I don't perceive too many issues with that with the, the truncated schedule and limited purpose we have here. We can skip through the emergency. Executive session, again, if there is a, a legal concern, uh, typically what we do in our agendas is, you know, we have a list of agendas and you'll see at the very end, that any matter listed on the agenda, you know, if the board wanted to, they could ask for an executive session if a legal question came up on one of those agenda matters. Or if we knew ahead of time there was going to be a specific issue that we wanted to have an executive session on, we would post that as a separate line item on the agenda. Executive session for discussion regarding legal advice regarding X. It doesn't get into detail, but it has to provide enough information as to, just to give the public notice as to what's going to be discussed. And that's pretty much all we'd have to worry about with executive sessions with this board and with, with the substance. So it would just be essentially legal advice and you can have that. Again, we typically have a, a general provision on agendas that any, any item listed on the agenda could be subject to an executive session. If during the agenda, a legal question came up, you always have that opportunity to have that as a separate executive session. Just the basics of the agenda, the date, time and place of the meeting. You also now have to post on the agenda when the facility will be open to the public prior to the meeting. So for example, if we're going to have a meeting at seven o'clock, we have to post on there that the, the building will be open at 6:30 for public access. that the building will be open at 6:30 for public access. You have to list, list the specific matters to be discussed. They've got to be listed with enough specificity that just an average person can, can read it and know, okay, the, the board is going to be talking about X, Y, and Z. And you can only have discussions with regard to what's, what's on that agenda. And again, your discussions can be very, very broad and encompassing with regard to the charter. I would encourage if we're going to have specific sections and things, that you can identify those on the, on the agenda. An action may only be taken, discussed, and considered on those items listed on the agenda. Again, one of the reasons why this agenda is, is so long because if it's not on there, you couldn't discuss it. Wanted to give you that option and opportunity to, you know what, we're going to, we're not going to do that, we don't want to do this, however you guys want to handle that, totally up to you. We've, we've prepared and proposed, and you guys have a sample, rules and procedures for the board that you can go over later. That kind of goes through, part of that has a format provisions for agendas and stuff. Again, if you guys don't want that, you can change or amend that. However, however you guys want, it just has to meet the minimum standards of 24 hours' notice, it's got to be published, you have to take minutes, and those have to be published within a specific time periods afterwards. Next. Can we discuss matters not on the agenda? No, seriously, no, not if we don't want to get involved. All of the above. So just again, a friendly reminder as to the importance of having things properly noticed and placed on the agenda. So next, meeting minutes. Maybe in writing or recorded, the minutes or statement of legal actions taken must be available for public inspection within 30, three working days after the meeting. Again, it's not, the, the minutes don't have to be approved within three working days. It's that, that recording or draft has to be available within three working days. Post-approved meeting minutes within two working days following approval. Again, normally, for example, when, when the council meets every month, they're approving the minutes from the prior month. So it just depends on, on what your schedule is going to be, but we will work with you on making sure that, that those minutes and things are done appropriately if that's what you want. If reported, the public must be able to access the reporting. Our recommendation is that they are recorded. It just makes it so much easier with today's technology, just report everything. And then it also helps if there's ever a question, you can go back and you can review the recordings. I think so-and-so had said something or mentioned something. It makes it so much easier to have that after recording.
How are we recording these terms? To review what we're doing?
And staff can help with coordinating and facilitating those needs. We do it already, we do it already for the council meetings, for the other boards and commission meetings, so we have a, you know, process is already there and in place. It's not something that we have to recreate. With regard to, let's go through this next. Executive session minutes. Executive sessions do have minutes. Those minutes are confidential before every executive session and admonition of confidentiality is given that the, the meeting is confidential except for members of the boards, the auditor general doing an audit, or the attorney general or county attorney doing an investigation. There's one other that involves employees, but you guys don't have to worry about that. And those minutes, again, are, are taken, but they are confidential, they are not published and disclosed, and only members of the board can see those minutes. So for example, if you had, if you had a meeting and there was an executive session called and there was discussion, but two or three of you weren't at that meeting, you, even though you weren't at the meeting during that executive session, you could go back and look at the minutes to familiarize yourself with what was discussed during that meeting.
Can we backtrack for one sec real quick?
Absolutely.
You say a record of how each member voted. Are we going to, is it voice vote or do we do a roll call vote?
It's up to the, up to the board. For example, what we do with the, the city council, if, if it's a, if it's a motion and there's a voice, voice vote and there were two nays, it would just say five ayes, two nays.
Okay, so that's okay.
Yes.
All right.
Normally, I would suggest that at, at the adoption or the approval of the final proposed charter, we do a voice vote or a roll call vote. So every vote is acknowledged as to who was an aye, who was a nay.
Yeah.
With regard to that process. But for the, the rest of any votes that you guys take for, you know, adopting procedures or scheduling meetings or whatever it is, just an aye and a nay. And if, if there's a concern as to whether or not someone was misunderstood, a clerk can always ask for, for clarification.
May I have your question?
Yes.
Is my understanding that it needs to be unanimous approval?
No. The requirement for the proposed charter, the proposed charter has to be approved by the majority of the Board of Freeholders.
Okay.
So the proposed charter that goes to the voters has to be approved at a minimum by eight of the Board of Freeholders. And just so you know, any actions that are taken in violation of the open meeting law are null and void. Again, I don't foresee any issues or concerns with, with the Board of Freeholders, but for example, if something were to happen and the council were to, to vote on a contract that wasn't part of an agenda or something, you know, wasn't part of the meeting, that contract is null and void unless it was later ratified and a properly noticed and published There are potential violations with regard to open meeting law. There can be a $500 day civil penalty, removal from office. That would only happen if the attorney general were to file a, a court action, assess the officer with all costs awarded. Essentially, if someone makes a complaint and it goes beyond just a notice of violation from the AG's office and gets into an actual civil litigation, you could be potentially on, on the hook for your own legal fees and defenses. Normally what happens, for example, they had a, a council member do a reply all and express an opinion on an issue. That got reported to the AG's office as a open meeting law violation, but it was done outside of an open meeting. The AG's office then sends a, a letter to the, to the city and to the city attorney saying, this is what happened, please provide a response and an explanation. Go through and respond and explain to the AG's office as to what happened. In that example, it was inadvertent mistake, hit accidentally, reply all. And in that case, it was, okay, we found that an open meeting law violation did accrue the city attorneys directed to conduct additional open meeting law training with the city council and report back to the AG's office once that training has occurred. Typically what happens is, you know, first or second time, it's additional training. If it's repeat issues, then the AG's office will look at potentially initiating a, a civil action for additional sanctions or penalties. Rarely does that ever happen. Conflicts of interest. We really don't need to get into that, but if, if there is a, a matter in which you have a pecuniary interest in that comes before the board, you have to refuse yourself from any self-dealing. Again, I don't foresee any issues with that. We're dealing with a very specific formation of a charter. We're not dealing with contracts or agreements or anything that would essentially create a pecuniary interest unless, for example, somebody were to recommend a provision in the charter that only benefited them or their business. So we don't really need to get into, you know, conflict with regard to you, your relatives, different things like that. Just know that those are requirements that apply to all elected officials. You have all this in the package as well if you want to look at it in more detail. Go next, public records. There we go. Reports have articulated three definitions of what constitutes a public record. A record may be made by a public officer in pursuance of a duty with purpose to disseminate information or memorialize official transactions. A record required by law or necessary in the discharge of a duty, and written records of transactions of a public officer in office, which is a convenient and appropriate method of discharging duties. Super clear and unambiguous. Written by an attorney, I imagine. Just know that your emails as a Board of Freeholder, on Board of Freeholder stuff, those would be considered public records. Any notes that you take would be considered public records. Drafts of charter provisions, whether adopted or not, would be considered public records. Once we get through this process, I, as the mayor suggested, keeping everything in a, in a separate folder and then it can just be put onto a phone drive and provided to the city and maintained, and then once the, the statutory time period for those records comes and goes, then they're deleted and destroyed in accordance with the public records retention law. Records do not have to be maintained into perpetuity except for very certain specific things, like email and stuff like that. There are timeframes of to when those, how long they have to be maintained and stuff like that. So again, however the board wants to handle the, the email situation, if you want city staff to coordinate and put together a dedicated email for, for you guys, be able to have access to that, I think would be a good idea. Next. Next. So emails, text messages, and other forms of direct messaging used for public business received or sent are public records if they relate to your duties as a member of the public. Again, that, remember that, that, that does mean text messages. So if you send text messages between board members and stuff, those are public records. I would suggest limiting your, your written communications to just keep them in the email if you're going to have that. Phone call is not a, not a public record. You don't have to transcribe your phone calls if, if you talk with another board member or something.
You're just talking about only if it has to do with freeholder. You're communicating.
If you're communicating about something else, has nothing to do with freeholder stuff, it's just what has to do with, with freeholder business. And assume your electronic messages are public records, even if they're prepared on your personal computer, that's why we've, we've offered if you, if you want that, you know, Chromebook laptop so that you can do everything segregated from your personal stuff, not an issue whatsoever. It's just a, it's a matter of personal preference for, for some people. So again, and I deny access to the record. The vast majority of the, the time that responds is no. Just about everything that you do as a Board of Freeholders is going to be a public record unless there is a specific statute that makes something confidential. An example of that is, for example, somebody makes a complaint against a police officer and the police department does an internal investigation. That internal investigation ultimately does become a public record and is available for review, but not during, not until after that investigation has been completed, which will include any appeals process that the officers may have and stuff. And there's a certain time period that, that that investigation has to happen within 180 days and stuff like that. So that's just an example of, even though it's, it's a personal matter and it's a complaint and it could be an unfounded complaint, it would still be a, a public record available for review. So just go about your, your business with the understanding that if you're discussing or doing Board of Freeholders work, that it is a, a potential public record. There are times where we have, have argued certain exceptions with regard to the deliberative process where you're, you're having conversations back and forth or trying to come up with an ultimate thing, even those would be considered a public record. So just, just understand that. Are there any questions with regard to public records, open meeting laws?
Does the public have the right to speak at any, at all open meetings?
No.
Okay.
And again, the, the public has the right to attend. They do not have the right to speak. They don't have the, you know, it's, that is something that is up to the board, you know. For example, even with the, the city, the city council meeting, we have a call to the community. The city does not require to have a call to the community. In fact, that's a quasi violation of the open meeting law because it allows members of the community to come in and say whatever they want with regard to anything that's not on the agenda. And that's why the responses from the mayor and council are limited to directing staff to look into a matter, placing it on a future agenda, or responding to personal criticism. And once again, it's, it's an exception that has been made throughout the years to allow for that opportunity, have people come in and make comments and statements, but you can't have those discussions for things that are not on, on the meetings that are not on the agenda. So although the meetings have to be open to the public, you do not have, there just not have to be any public discussion. You don't have to do, you know, a public input. You can if you want, it's totally up to the board. Just like any council meeting, if somebody wanted to come in and make course meetings, they're entitled to do it as long as they're not interfering with the meeting when they're, they're doing it in a way that is offside and doesn't interfere with the, the board's actions and, and withholding that.
The other question with regard to emails and texts, it kind of feels, I mean, after reviewing this, it feels like, I mean, that should be, the majority of that should be for logistics, setting up the meetings. Can you give me an idea of, I mean, I'm afraid to, to text right now after going through that thing. What circumstance would you use it with the exception for setting up meetings, identifying logistics that you go, where you're going to set up a, a subcommittee meeting, et cetera? Or else would you use it?
For example, you guys break into your subcommittees or not even subcommittees, but you get into the actual work of, of drafting the different sections and ideas for this charter. You may have a question with regard to, you know, I want to reach out to so-and-so and ask them what their thought is on having this provision in the charter and stuff like that. So there are potential things that, that could come up other than just logistical things and things like that, which is why we want to make sure, everything that is done is done in a, a public meeting, that you, you schedule your meetings as much as possible in a, in a public meeting. We can coordinate those through staff, just like if, if we were to have to do a special meeting for the mayor and council, we coordinate that. We reach out to the mayor and council, find out what everybody's availability is to the then schedule that meeting. That's not an issue or a violation of the open meeting law. In most cases, you're not going to need email or text. You need to talk to somebody, talk to them. If you need to schedule something, go to the city manager or clerk and say, can you help us get this scheduled? And then they can take care of it. Open yourself up to having a worry about that text or email.
This won't happen to you guys, but let's say you really want something in there and you get voted down, or it doesn't get voted for. Other groups might want to then communicate with somebody who's an ally and complain about that. That's another circumstance where that sort of thing might arise. It's easy to fall into that trap.
Communication prior to this meeting and then discussions that we've had, all the hurdles or it's all?
You guys want to, you want to, you know.
We want to.
Prior to.
I'm here today.
It's gonna be okay, Will.
You can delete that.
My recommendation.
I am freezing. So cold.
We can turn it off.
Sorry, I told him to crank it down because I figured when we got 20 people in here.
My nose is cold.
They got the water, turn up the heat tonight. This is gonna be a short meeting. All right, so you guys have now experienced the speed of government. We've got nothing accomplished, you've been here for now and 15 minutes. Other than you're now educated at least enough on open meeting law. That's only part of it. Let's see, we'll put you on a future agenda and the chairman just gets to the light once you do that. So my suggestion to you is the next thing you do is you elect the chairman.
I don't know who's taking nominations, but for the reasons you stated earlier, I would nominate Paul as the chairman because he's been good at communicating. And I apologize, I don't know, I don't know everybody in here as well as I should, but I, and I would nominate Suzanne for the vice chair. I think we need both of them.
It might be better if you had one at a time.
I'll nominate Paul for chairman.
I second that.
So and under normal practices, you know, a motion's been made and seconded, then you can have discussion with regard to that motion, but as soon as. You can take other nominations. Take other nominations, but then once you're at that point, then you would just ask for a call of the vote. Yeah, I don't know who asked you that. Is there any nomination?
We make a motion to approve Paul as chairman and Suzanne as vice chair.
Well, we've got a motion and a second for Paul as chairman on the floor now, so.
First chair then vice chair.
Yeah. So if there's no other nominations, then I would suggest that we would call for a vote. All those in favor of Paul as the chairman? Any opposed?
That's a delayed aye.
He did a delayed aye.
Now, Paul, you're, you take, take over with regard to asking for nominations.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to, I'd like to accept nominations for the vice chair.
I nominate Suzanne.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there anybody else, any other, anybody else wants to nominate? So all those in favor of Suzanne?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion is then carries.
Congratulations, you have secretary and the vice chair.
Do we need somebody on the committee to publish minutes or is staff going to do that so that we don't need a secretary?
You can have staff do that.
Okay.
For this meeting?
For this meeting, for all meetings, you guys can have that discussion right now, how you want to handle that process.
What about, do we, there was some talk about having a third person on the executive secretary. Could we have a member at large? Do we need to have a third person?
It's totally up to you, you don't have to. Normally you have a chair, a vice chair. If you wanted a, somebody as a secretary is designated to.
Or a member at large, or you don't, that's not.
Not necessarily, but again, totally up to how you guys want to have your board set up.
The city staff can help us. And I would think our sub, within our subcommittees, you can establish the hierarchy there as well.
Do we need to make a motion to have subcommittees?
If that's available on the agenda to discuss, if you guys want to have subcommittees, you can have that discussion. You can discuss if you want to form subcommittees. And if you do want to form subcommittees, then you would, you would want to have a discussion to what subcommittee and how.
I'd rather meet together.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would suggest that maybe this is a good point, time to have a presentation from staff about how subcommittees might function and how they might multiply your efforts, so that people will have some context for what the subcommittee concept even is.
Sounds great.
Mr. Chairman, of course, everyone can see you, and I know all of them from before. So that's the left, all of this, and of course, let me say first of all this, we're here to help you. As the mayor has said, we want to help you any way we can. We want to be your liaisons. Please come see us. If there's anything we can do for you as far as scheduling that comes in, we think we can coordinate, any advice we can give you, please come to us and ask us a question. We'll be glad to help you any way we can. That being said, as far as subcommittees goes, what we, what we suggest, of course, it's totally up to you what you want to do, is that, of course, today is the whole group, but that you break up into three smaller subcommittees. And the reason why we suggest you do that is there's 17 sections of the charter, 17 articles. And we've looked at those 17 sections and we've divided those, or how we suggest you divide them, into three subcommittees based off areas of interest. So for example, I would be involved with things like administration, robbery. Paige is our assistant city manager, also our finance director. She would be involved with things like finance and taxation. Our city clerk is our third subcommittee. She would handle things like ordinances and resolutions, so on and so forth. So we can certainly tell you the list that which each subcommittee would fall under. For example, my six sections would be administration, city manager, court, general provisions, definitions, and succession. Paige's would be finance and taxation, contracts, ethics, franchise and public utilities, and amendments. Terry's would be council, administrative offices, ordinance and commissions, ordinance and resolutions, elections, and referendum and recall. So when we talk about subcommittees, again, these are based off our areas of expertise. But again, they're yours, subcommittees, they're not ours. These are just what we recommend dividing these up. You guys get totally, change it however you want to. This is how we thought it made sense to divide those up, and that's what we would suggest. So we would be your liaison per subcommittee. So for you guys, of course, there's 14 of you, so maybe you want to divide it up five, five, and four. That's totally up to you. But again, part of that reason for doing that is, again, you have the meeting of all of you today, so you would basically have, we think that for the next few weeks, you guys, the subcommittee should meet twice a week because your schedule is so tight. And you spend those next two to three weeks going over your five articles, your five sections. And then you go over them, you discuss them, you make changes, and then you vote on them in your subcommittee. And you think, hey, what's good? We're good on these five sections. Then you're ready to sell your five sections to the committee as a whole. So that way, the whole group isn't focusing on one little section, rather a subcommittee is, is working through five sections and selling to the whole group. So that, the idea here being by Christmas, you're ready to send the draft to the attorneys for review. Our discussion is next session, have you want to do it? Does that make sense?
Just saying, the concept is to multiply your time. If you have 17 sections and you want to have a whole group spend a couple hours on every section as a group, you're going to have to spend 34 hours total, which is very hard to do in the next couple of weeks. If you break it into groups of three, then every time you meet, you're actually having three hours put on something. So the amount of time instead of 34 hours is 10. So literally, it just multiplies the ability to spend a lot of time on a section and really flesh it out, and then bring that section back to the whole group and explain why, as a subcommittee, you think these sections are now in good shape. And then it allows everybody else to have input into it. So what you do is you cut down a process that might be a, literally a 60-hour process, you're going to cut it down to being a 20-hour process, which then becomes realistic to get done between now and the end of December. So that's, that's the whole reason for suggesting that you break this stuff up into, into groups that you can deal with, is to multiply, multiply your efforts and make the hour, total hours that you have to put in between now and the end of December realistic.
So the, I understand the concept then would be, say, one group meets with Matthew and goes over all the things that Matthew was talking about, that he would handle, and that group would work with, in that section. And then once that subcommittee that's working with Matthew agrees that everything is in place in those sections, then the group comes together and that subcommittee presents to the rest of the group, and the group can say, okay, yeah, we like that, or wait, at that point, I disagree with, or whatever, whatever.
Right.
Okay, I can see that work.
The idea is that, is that you have in-depth a lot of time for the subcommittee to spend on five sections, and then you bring it back as a group and say, we like these five sections, and, but then the group now can make changes until you get, as a group, to think the five sections are good.
Right, so it's, it's not that one group meets Matthew and then, then another group meets Matthew. Okay.
No. The concept was to try to figure out a way to get enough hours to really do a good job, but to get that compressed in, and literally, there's just not a lot of time, you throw in the holidays or whatever, between now and the end of December, and that's really realistically when you need to be done. You just don't have a lot of time. So it's a way to get that, we don't want to do a poor job. What we want to do is a job that where you're proud of this charter when it gets all done. It's just, it's a way to do that, I think, that gets a good amount of input on every section and then lets the whole group look at every section and make a decision.
Okay, so if everyone decided that that was a good idea, the next thing would be to figure out which individuals prefer to work with.
Correct. I think there's a form, I think you've been given a form to do that.
Like Kenny has a lot of backgrounds that look a lot of areas.
There's a form like this that if the chair.
I don't have it.
We don't have that.
I thought you put this up somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
Ken, what are your?
So, so I understand what you're trying to accomplish, and I appreciate all that, but I, I've been thinking about this a lot today, and I have some concerns. If we spend time drafting things in those individual subcommittees and then get back to the larger group, because we, we really went over language and got it, and then the rest of the group says, that's a stupid idea. Now we're drafting it again. I think it's a good idea to have the groups in a very brief fashion say, should this or should this not be included in the charter? Right? That's the first question. And I think there's a misconception that the charter is going to somehow be the rules for the city, but it isn't. Like, Mayor, you raised a good point. Yeah, you raised a good point about the traffic up there. There's a difference between putting something in the charter that says, and the city council shall have the ability to regulate traffic on, you know.
On all roads.
We're on our own.
Or do you just say, you know, that, that's covered already. That's covered in statute. That's covered, being a charter city is what gives us the ability then to do things, not having it in the charter per se. Correct?
Yeah, there's, you know, the charter functions, the charter can function with very, it can be a very open, you know, like just a summary kind of, very, very pithy kind of document.
Yes, yes.
To the extent that, that there's more information in the, you know, in the charter or in one direction from the residents, then it may give you a stronger argument for why you want one path or another.
I guess my point is, we aren't going to necessarily get into that nitty gritty in every one of those subgroups if we decide to do them. And I'll give the two examples I've given before. The city of Flagstaff really wanted to increase their minimum wage in the city, and the state legislature said, no, you can't do it. The state has a minimum wage, you have to abide by that. They didn't have something in their charter that says, and this shall be the minimum wage in Flagstaff. They were a charter city that allowed them to adopt an ordinance to do that. Tucson wanted to change their elections. They didn't have something in their charter that says, and the elections will occur on this date. They were a charter city which allowed them to enact an ordinance to change their dates. Legislature didn't like it, they lost that battle too. So I, my point is, the charter isn't everything. We don't have to include everything. We look at what other cities have done, right? And we say, does that fit in our charter? Should we do that? And if so, how should we regulate that? Right? So I think, Paul, if you want to do that, and if the group wants to break into groups, I just don't want, people in the room probably want to have comments on a lot of this stuff.
I have it in all three areas.
Yeah, so I wouldn't say you should spend a lot of time in subgroups doing things other than researching what the options are, identifying the pros and cons, and coming back to the big group and said, these are the pros and cons we identified, now let's all vote. I just think there's, I think there's benefit to it. I just don't want to get too much into detail in the individual groups, because people want to have their hands in everything, I think.
And again, that's just a recommendation and option that the board can do. Like you said, the board can make that decision, do what you want. And with regard to the details of the charter, yes, from a, from a legal perspective, you want to have those, those local matters identified in the charter, but in a, in a general way because in order to change the charter, you have to take it back to the voters, and that's a long process to be able to make a change to the charter. So if you put something in the charter and it's very specific and you find out that it just doesn't work the way you thought it would, then you have to go back to the voters to make that change. And that's again, another reason why I recommend you don't have specific citations in the charter to specific Arizona statutes, because those statutes can change. And then you have to go back and update and amend your charter, and that has to be done by way of a vote. Because you have your charter, and then you still have your city code. And you still have the details of how that is going to be regulated within the state.
So I guess my summary point was, I don't mind breaking into groups. I don't want to be in the groups in three weeks, all come back together and say, now you have a week to put it all together. I would rather be in groups in a short period of time, identify the pros and cons of including or excluding things, and in what manner would you include them or exclude them, and then come back to the big group and say, here are our pros and cons for this, let's all talk about it. That would be my.
Yeah, good idea. So just, you know, put together a schedule. That's the main thing is, you can do it any way you want to do it, so everybody feels comfortable, but you need to feel comfortable by the end of December.
And then my last question, what if there are things that are not included in your outline, like land use isn't anywhere in anything we've gotten? So I assume it's not in this, right? Whatever we just got. Oh, it, the categories you read out didn't include land use.
Land use is covered in the, in the draft.
Oh, it is.
The draft that's on here.
Oh, I was, okay, I was looking at the, what we got. Terry, we got a draft charter outline at some point.
Yeah, there, yeah.
That was from.
And it wasn't in there.
No, it's not.
Okay, it is now.
There's things that fall into sections that are listed in independent articles.
That's just an example of, if, which of the three groups would say, we want to include this, which, which isn't? So I guess that would be after you get back into the big group. Somebody would say, hey, nobody looked at this, what do you all think about this?
And that may be a great topic for discussion at the next meeting where you guys have the opportunity to go back, take a look at all the different charters, what's in the charter, all the provisions, and then come back together. And now that you have a much better ideas to the overall scope and things, and then say, okay, this is what we want to do. But again, totally a board decision.
Is there an outline on these flash drives that, that's kind of been laid out, prepared in our lab meetings?
There's a word document on there that has a draft charter where we've taken, staff has taken. It's like a model.
Okay, like to fill in, like an outline or?
It's actually a draft charter, but it's in a word document so that you can make whatever changes you want. And it's just, that way it kind of sets up the layout and basics of what is in a typical charter. And if there are things that are specific that you want to add, that is the board's prerogative. You are the ones that are preparing and recommending this charter to the, to the residents.
So on the flash drives, you've got the draft, as Joe was just speaking about, you've got a spreadsheet that staff prepared last spring that compares other cities how to handle certain issues, that's in there too. And you have the 19 charters around the state to see for comparison as well. You'll see, some of those charters from other cities are really long, because some of the other cities put their entire city code in their charter. I would not recommend doing that, but some cities did. But again, that's one of those there, so you can look at it. And again, on the draft, it's totally up to you. You can change, you think you want to add, delete, throw it away. It's just a, it's a starting point for you guys to work on, make it what you want to be.
With that in mind, are we going to use something that tracks changes? I mean, if everybody's.
So as far as that goes, that's a good question. So if you guys choose to go into subcommittees, we would recommend that whoever's doing the revising be someone that's familiar with Word, that understands strike throughs and editing, et cetera, so we can see that. Because we're looking at these, if they're done through Word, it's much easier for us to understand it than it is if they're written in pen.
But we would have the opportunity in those subgroups to edit hard copies and then give them to the city or whoever's helping us with them to edit it and copy it.
How do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Our, our main recommendation is that as a, as a group, you guys figure out what your meeting schedule is going to be so that we can.
Let's do that first.
Get an appropriate location reserved so that you guys have the space and.
Well, nobody's had a chance to look at these hard drives, these flash drives.
Kind of homework.
We have to.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we, so we go home today, we load the, the example and we can all make our changes and bring this back, then our, our computers are not compromised for, like somebody could call our computers in and want to do.
If you keep everything on that hard drive.
On this flash drive.
Okay.
You can migrate it off.
Okay. Yeah. Right, on that subject, you know, I've seen a lot of this and it's never the public records per se that they confiscate your computer. It's always they ask for all your public records and Paul sends them a public record that says, I sent this to everybody. And everybody else sends that same public record, said, I got this from Paul, and one person doesn't. That means that person had deleted things off their computer. That's the computer they want. If you're not deleting public records and when they ask for public records, you are responsive to their request, they almost never come out and say, we want your device. And they wouldn't get a right to get your device because you were responsive to the public records request. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah. It's, if somebody submits a public records request and says, I, I want these emails or communications, then we send out a request to those individuals saying, we, we've got a request for these, please provide us with all of these. And then we provide those and make them available for, for view, not on your device.
Yes.
You, you provide them to us and we make them available. And like you said, rarely if ever, this is not a circumstance like recently with the, the mayor of New York where FBI went into his, his car and confiscated all of his devices and stuff like that. Those are criminal type matters. Public records requests is just, we have to make it available for review.
Yeah.
And it's not, not, we have to make it of your computer available for review. We just have to make those documents available for review.
Really quick, before we get too far down the path, does everyone want a city email established for them to communicate?
Yes.
I guess, yes, that's, I guess.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
No, we can, we've got direction on that and we can start working on putting them together.
And then the second thing is, does anyone need a tablet? Does anyone want to have a tablet? Okay, so then. I think we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place for us to actually have and.
Is there, is there a verbal tablet or a laptop?
Who needs one?
Who either wants?
You're, okay, but clarification, if we're going on, we take this.
But we just bring this to whoever's.
Back and forth, then we don't necessarily need to.
Each side. Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm good with, I'm good with the.
If you want it, just communicate it to, you can communicate it to Terry and we can put together.
Yeah.
That way we get a list of, of who needs what and we can go and acquire that and put it to you.
If we all agree as a group, do your modifications will be on this, you bring this every time. Maybe Terry, you, we could just have one computer for, for the meetings.
And then we can show it on a screen, probably, right? We would have to, like, the sooner we know, the better, since we.
Okay.
One thing I might suggest is you are setting it to your flash drive. Every time you work on it, add a date to it. And what I mean by that, the one you say, say, we'll say, clean draft with today's date, something like that. When you work on it over the weekend, if you make revisions, save it with that date, like eleven, two, twenty-three, we work on your eleven, five, twenty-three. So that way you have versions where you work along the way, so you don't mix up versions, if that makes sense.
And, uh, use the track changes.
Yes.
It makes so much easier to see.
Well, we need to get together, I think, one more time as a large group and have, everybody have had the opportunity to review some of the stuff that we've got and then make a decision if we're going to go with subcommittees. And then I think we need to at least, each individual subcommittee needs to have an, like a sub-chair on that committee that makes sure that the meeting gets set up and that we're doing that. My suggestion is we meet, can we meet next week? Is, can this group meet next week?
We have to.
I think we have to.
And then, on this schedule here, you don't have Fridays, so we don't meet on Fridays? Is that, we can't meet on Fridays as a public?
Any day you want.
Okay, 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 okay.
As opposed to Tuesday, Thursday, like afternoon.
So we need to meet next week, Monday or Tuesday next week?
Tuesday.
I think Tuesday's better.
If it's, if it's late afternoon.
Can we do, can we do?
Give them time to publish on Monday.
And what's the latest the city wants us to meet?
Oh, we did two today.
And I, and we can, we, can we do four o'clock?
I can do four.
You can say four?
Find out if that works for everybody.
We can coordinate another space which is larger and more conducive to.
What about the library? Could we go, go there?
Of course, they'll, they'll, they'll get it in the library.
Is it?
Can we, can we make, have a, a meeting this Tuesday back here at four o'clock?
Can we do it here in the room?
On, this, coming Tuesday at four o'clock?
Yep.
I can do it.
So let's do that.
I'm going to be Tuesday.
Okay, and then a question on the agenda, then, it needs to be published within twenty-four hours. We have the ability to kind of build that agenda here and then what happens to me is it will be by Monday morning?
Just put everything on again.
I think we need to have a general agenda as possible, so we can talk about everything. And then add the executive session as well if we need to do.
Well, that's why the document is great, I was just using it every time.
Terry.
Yeah, I was using it every time.
I don't need a lighter than chair.
Well, yeah.
Or like.
Well, I don't know that we need to, there's only.
We'll just remove like.
The first one.
Chairperson by chairperson.
Keep the same one, just remove the oath chair by chair.
Yes.
But she also need to put in discussion of the, of the, of different charter provisions or something, so they can talk about the actual charter.
Yeah.
So Mayor, I, I've always, I always concern, we, we want to produce a charter that ultimately people approve, right?
Correct.
Are you concerned at all about people wanting to comment on our proceedings and not being able to, because it's just published twenty-four hours in advance, I never had a chance to get there? I mean, what can we do so that the public feels welcome to contribute?
If you come up with an actual schedule, which I think you need to do.
I agree.
We'll put it on the website.
We will.
I, I think we ought to do that, Paul, just because.
Today?
Whenever we can come up with a schedule, maybe it's next week's week.
I'd say Tuesday we finish.
Yeah, Tuesday we'll put together a schedule.
That we just set, a set schedule that says, we will meet on these dates and let the public feel welcome so that nobody can ever criticize us.
At least, you need at least these dates.
Yes, yes.
Because you may need more dates, you may find out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and nobody can criticize us for not trying to include the public.
Well, so may I make a suggestion? If there's seventeen articles in this charter, maybe we make a goal that on, by Tuesday or before they print the agenda, that we are going to review items, you know, one through four. And that could be on the, on the agenda.
So you can put on the agenda that you can talk about all the items.
Yes.
Okay. So just have. Yeah, I would say broader is better than more narrow.
Put it, we can have that on the agenda, we're going to discuss object.
And I also think it's important to have, um. Okay, okay. Because if we're talking about finance, I want to have our finance person here to.
I would suggest that if you could, you could have a, a goal of trying to meet at least twice a week at the, at the outset to, and everybody come next week with your, your calendars, your availability to see what makes, and with a group this size, you're, you're probably never going to have, uh, an incident where you don't have a conflict. But again, because of Zoom and different things like that, we're able to, to accommodate, to make sure that everybody can participate as, as much as possible. But making sure you have a, a, a schedule as far out as advanced as possible makes that, that public feel like they, they have the ability, they want to come in, they want to sit during that meeting. And again, that's why I would recommend that we, you know, after next week, avoid this room because you can't fit very much of the public in here, but we can coordinate space to where you guys have rooms that you need and it also would be able to accommodate if, if somebody will want, wants to come and, and watch and view the proceedings.
Is there any way public could give us written comments? You know, I mean, how, how does that happen?
If you can publish a request. You can, you can have your own rules. I, I'm going to suggest to you, particularly if you're going to meet as a big group all the time, that you limit public comment to written comments on sections.
Right.
You, you can publish what you're working on and if people want to make a comment and they want to put it in writing, because if you don't, you're going to spend, if you want to meet for two hours, you don't have two hours of public comment particularly and you'll get nothing done. So you require people, if they've got, here's what we're going to work on, we're going to work on this draft, got comments about this draft, put them in writing so we can consider.
If we do break into these smaller groups to get some things started initially, so you're saying a four, uh, if we have five people, we have to have three in a quorum and four, we have to have three?
Two.
Two.
If it's four, it'll be three.
Did both ways.
The five would be three.
Either way, it would be five.
Yeah, either would be three.
Also. Fifty percent plus one.
Yeah.
But that quorum can include a person that's on Zoom or on the phone or something like that?
Yeah, correct, they're present.
I think we need to have two days scheduled next week. Yeah. It's Tuesday and one other day.
It's next week.
How do you?
Thursday, Thursday's Thursday, that's a great day.
Friday.
What's Sunday?
Thursday at noon?
Yeah, Thursday. Over at Marty's.
Everybody wants to go to Marty's.
Can we, can we, let's go with the Tuesday and then we'll build, we'll, we will have two, we'll put a schedule together for the following weeks to go twos and twos.
Yeah.
You know, I want to be Friday.
Unless Fri-, unless you want to meet on, but I don't know, the city's not here on Friday.
We're going Friday.
So you're proposing one next week and then go two, two.
Everybody will come in with their schedule and we will put together, we will build a schedule out for the rest of the month and through into December.
And they can just be like getting behind the eight ball and.
Yeah, I agree. What if we meet Monday early evening and then hit the ground running to, to four o'clock on Tuesday?
We could make Tuesday's meeting longer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And just have, I, it's tough to get one Monday, and they have to publish this. They have to get it agendized and open the public.
Oh, that's right.
And doing that before Monday is going to be an issue. But I would say if Tuesday's meeting is a little longer than most meetings, like usually they're two hours, but Tuesday is three hours?
Yeah, four, seven, five.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
And usually when you publish a meeting you don't publish in end time, you just publish the start time. The meeting will start at seven or four or whatever. If it goes till ten or midnight, it goes till ten or midnight. It's totally up to the board.
Because the, when the. The city's closed Thursday, Friday.
But again, just because.
I know what you're saying.
Just because the city's closed, if we can coordinate another space that's available, you don't have, you're not.
But then we would, we would not have access to the city, a city person to help us with the minutes and all that.
Recording it.
Reporting and all deal.
You should take that.
Okay.
All right.
We'll do my day at Tuesday long.
Tuesday, four o'clock.
Tuesday four.
Here.
Fantastic.
In this room.
And reviewing all the draw, all the material.
All the, we will have the ability to review all of the articles.
And then also, I think.
In your flash drive?
You guys have also been given a, a copy, a sample of, of Board of Freeholders Rules and Procedures, if you want to take a look at that. That's just kind of a, a guideline on how meetings are run and stuff like that. If you want to adopt something like that, you're more than welcome. The council has something like that. That's a truncated kind of version of, of what the council has. Otherwise, you know, typically what you said, these meetings are governed by the law of its rules of order when it comes to procedural matters. You're also governed by state statute and different things like that. But it, it does help to have a, a guideline in place to where a question does come up. Okay, this is, this is what we agreed to in our procedures, this is how we're going to.
So just a procedural thing, we have that on the meeting. Can, if, everyone gets a chance to look at this over the next three or four days, are we able to reach out and say, hey, have you looked at this committee? What committee are you thinking about maybe being on?
You, you can't.
On these days, I.
You cannot.
I can.
You could, you know, it might be the city manager could start inquiring, but you can't. If you need that, you're going to end up having.
For our in trouble. Do you have a feeling, Paul, where you would allow people to be on more than one if somebody wants to meet?
I think if somebody wants to meet and be here all day long with the city, they're, they're fine.
Well, then you can, you can serve on all of them.
Yes.
We have to tell the voters if they have it.
Yes, sure.
I don't want to be in a situation where I'm trying to like attest to one area that I wasn't very involved in.
Yeah, well, but then, won't we have the ability though to look at what, so if they had a subcommittee met by people, we want to access that before the next meeting or we want to know what went on, we'll have the ability to look at what they talked about and discussed, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, look, you need to preface this all with the actual amount of time that you're going to have to get this done. that you're going to have to get this done. So, I mean, I completely understand, I mean, I'm empathizing with the fact that everybody wants to see all of the work that's going to be produced. I just worry about it.
Can't, can't be done.
January 16th is going to be here in the bat of an eye. So whatever allows us to do this most expeditiously, I'm on board with that.
Like Kenny said, that's how I was thinking it was going to be done anyways, not just, you're doing your whole little thing, we bring, whatever committee split it up, which I think we got to run with that, is now we're deciding that we're going to break up in three committees, not Tuesday and so forth, not deciding which ones we want to be on, but we're going to do this.
I'm, I'm okay with breaking up, I'm also okay if somebody wants to be on all three committees.
For sure. Well, I really appreciate the work you've done, because I think, to be honest with you, I think 90% of this stuff is going to go so fast. Do we want to be a mayor, council, form of government, or a manager, council, form of government? How do, do we want to change that? No, nobody wants to change that, move on to the next one. How it's being done, and then the question is, those things that we ask you, how is this currently in the rules and regs? And you say, well, that's exactly it, it's in rules and regs, it was passed by resolution of the council. Do we want to put that in the charter to make it more long-lasting and more strict? Do we want to do that or not, or are we okay with the way it is? We're all okay with the way it is, move on to the next one. I think we're going to get through this, and then there are going to be those ones where we have hard discussions. And I just hate to have too much hard discussion take place in a small group when everybody wants to come in.
And it's all going to come in, yeah.
I think those 80%, 80% plus of the provisions that are in this charter are not going to be controversial.
Yes, yes.
But there are, there are going to be 10% or 15% that need to have discussion.
And I think the groups will get through those quickly, bring them to the big group, and we'll have those discussions. And I appreciate what you're saying, is, it could take a long time if you really scrutinized every single subject.
That would be my concern.
Yeah.
And I would recommend that you adopt these procedures, some kind of procedures, because there will be a question sometime, and it's going to be, it's not going to be a pressure cooker, but there'll be pressure as this thing builds, and people have different opinions on this and that. It's a lot simpler if you have a set of rules that you're living by, that you can look at, and you don't argue the rubber's rules. With rubber's rules, they're twisted around in a way that they can be messed up.
Susan, are you...
These are a lot simpler, and it just would suggest that you read through them and you adopt them, because it's easier to do that now than to fight about it in the future.
The members talking about item H, which is on the back of your agenda. Not saying that today, I thought we don't mean that. I just want to make sure everybody's talking about it, item H.
I think you've got to... So you got, you have these rules and procedures, it's just the, if you review them, I'm going to suspect that there's nothing in here that's going to give anybody any heartburn. But then, then if there's a problem in the future, that's...
Mr. Chairman, I'm two questions. One, you would ask about emails, and one thing I would tell you guys is that, as you said, that you guys can't email each other about availability, about, about issues that you're thinking on, we can't. And what I mean by that, if staff can reach out, all of you VTCs, and then we can get back again, say, hey, we have a majority to meet at this date and this time, please utilize us, let us help you, let us help you. Again, there's things we can do that you can't, that's what's going to be involved. Yes, please let us help you. I would also ask you, since we're taking a meeting Tuesday at four, probably a three-hour meeting, anybody here not like people, let us read your two years of long meeting. People that are well fed, get along there in my experience.
Pardon me? Oh, is there a motion, do you think we want to make a motion to have that meeting on Tuesday at four o'clock? Is there a second?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of having a meeting on Tuesday at four o'clock?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
That's a good, it's a good example, that everybody just needs to take the heart what just happened. Your natural tendency is going to be just to talk to one another and think that you got something done. But if you don't have a motion, you haven't done anything. And so you haven't authorized anything. A lot of times you'll have to do, you'll say, well, because if you don't do it, then we're not, we don't have a meeting set for next Tuesday. We've all agreed to it, but it's not set. You got to use motions, you got to, it's a little bit more formal relationship than just sitting around the table talking.
Is that one here?
Tuesday will be here, and then, once you guys establish your schedule and stuff, then the city can coordinate on getting a better venue.
And that's already on the agenda, establishing the schedule and all that, yeah?
Yeah. And then we'll add that the other agenda, I mean, with regard to discussion in general, with regard to the charter provisions, if you want to have that. And then moving forward, then it would be typically that the chair would coordinate with Terry with regard to the agenda and how the agenda is set up. If it's broad and encompassing, but if you want to have a specific meeting that says what we're going to discuss in detail, these first three provisions of the proposed charter, you can limit it to that. Or you can have a discussion and possible action with regard to the proposed charter.
But right now we have it open, we can discuss all of it, every one. Matthew?
I'm paying you, if you have questions for your email concerns.
Thank you, Chair, I'm also over IT for the city. So if everybody does want a actual city email address, we'll have to purchase licensing for them. We just did our annual licensing renewal, and we don't have 14 extra. So if we, if we do want it to be a city email, it'll take us a little time to purchase licenses, it will be expensive, or it won't be timely. The other thing we could do is, we could handle it for you, we could set up just a Gmail.
Yeah, a Gmail account.
And then that's free and...
Yeah, that would be...
Gmail.
Okay. And then if you do need a device, same thing, you can just let me know as soon as you need it.
Suzanne?
Is that it? Are we...
Do we have to call for adjournment?
Is there anything else on the agenda that you want to discuss?
Does anybody else have anything else they want to discuss?
Well, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can, Matthew, you said, you as a city staff. Okay, can you, I'm just sitting here thinking, let's say there's an area we're going to look at in our committee, and everybody's read through it, and I have a suggested change, and you have a suggested change, and you have one. Can we mail, email those suggested changes to you all to be kind of compiled, and then sent out to the whole committee in advance? Or does that make sense, or do we just, how do you guys recommend we handle that kind of thing? Do we wait till the day of, or...
Joe, I'm going to refer that to you as first, probably, to that. I'll buy the email device, propose changes, I'll think of a proposal with the front.
Yeah, I would suggest, if you want to consolidate it, then we can send it to city staff, send it to Matthew, and then it can be consolidated, and then that would be provided at the meeting, and then you would have that discussion at the meeting. That way, there's no argument as to, well, we sent this out to everybody, and it had suggested changes and comments from three or four different people, which would be an open meeting law issue. But if you get those changes to staff before the meeting, then we can prepare a document that has the differences, so that you have a better opportunity to discuss and go through things.
I just see challenges worth missing.
So you're saying if we have a hard copy, and we reviewed it, we can drop, we can leave it with the city, and to be...
If you do a hard copy, or if you, if you email, for example, you've got your Word document, you do your track changes, you can send those to Matthew, and then if four or five people send those, and we can try to put together, you know, that one section and show the different provisions, the different comments by everybody, and then have that in the packet available to review,